Good evening. It is 6:30, Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. Board of Alderman meeting for the City of Kearney call a meeting to order. Shirley, could you take role?
I have taken role call. Everybody's present and you have a quorum.
Okay, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
All right, Board, you'll see the consent agenda. Any questions or discussion on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing no questions or discussion, can we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I make a motion to approve as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes. Thank you. Under Mayor's remarks, I do just want to mention that today I had the privilege to meet with Senator Higeman and Representative Ritchie. We had some good discussions on not only challenges of communities in Missouri, but also successes. Really great meeting with those two, along with our Administrator Jim Eldridge and Shawna Cersey of the Kearney Area Development Council. So thanks to Senator Higeman and Representative Ritchie for taking some time to meet with me while they're in the area. Both of them are great elected officials that are serving us well. We'll move on to the Administrator's report.
Mr. Mayor, we have received very competitive bids with, for the Dogwood Sidewalk Project, which connects a sidewalk on Cedarwood Parkway to Dogwood Elementary from both the Cedarwood subdivisions and the Hills of Westwood subdivisions. The city is receiving a grant from MODOT for 80% of the project, up to $180,000. So we are, right now, only going to claim $144,300 of that total grant. It's very difficult to change the project scope to go outside of the area. So that's not necessarily possible, but we may be able to enhance some of the improvements that we're going to do. For instance, maybe the type of striping we put down on the crosswalks might be more of the vinyl type rather than just spray paint or something like that. We'll be mindful of trying to claim all of that grant. But enclosed in the agenda is an ordinance authorizing a contract with the low bidder, Mega Industries. Mega constructed the Prospect Sidewalk back in 2017. They did a very fine job with that. It still continues to look good and we were pleased with how we got along with them on that. So we recommend approval and that is enclosed in 4A, Mr. Mayor. And if you'd allow me to read by title only, I'd like to seek the Board's consideration and approval.
Yes, if you agree, 4A, the ordinance by title only, please.
An ordinance authorizing the city administrator to sign a contract with Mega KC for construction of the Dogwood Elementary Sidewalk Project, TAP 3457404.
Board, can we entertain a motion for the ordinance?
Make a motion to approve.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Second reading.
Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance authorizing the city administrator to sign a contract with Mega KC for construction of the Dogwood Elementary Sidewalk Project, TAP 3457404.
Recommend approval on second reading.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Poll, the Board is Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And thank you, Board. I do want to advise you all that because of the good pricing, we are asking Mega for a price to extend the sidewalk 1,100 feet, which is outside the scope to the Cottonwood subdivision. We're going to look and see if we can figure out how to justify that, you know, how much that's going to cost. So that would be actually outside the contract of this contract. So we're going to have to do some, some kind of an arrangement with them for that. And as well as we're going to, we've also provided them with a copy of the plans for the 19th Street Blue Sky Gardens connection that is essentially also a street crossing. And so they have that, those exact same kind of line items in the same project, but I can't tack that on to the contract. It'll have to be kind of a separate standalone using the same pricing. So we're hopeful if we can tally these up and figure out if there's still enough money in the till to do all those, we'll come forward with that. But it's a good opportunity because Mega knows how to build a sidewalk pretty well as far as I'm concerned. So.
Price and drive and wonder why they're in the area, hopefully we can figure that out.
Yeah.
I think the opportunity to enhance the connectivity of our sidewalks is wonderful.
Mr. Mayor, we have Nathaniel Thomas with us from Accounting Solutions. He is prepared to present the audit for the city's finances over the period of fiscal year 2020, ending March 31st. A draft copy of that is enclosed in 4B. And Ryan, I hope we have got it on share so he can share screen and because I think he'll want to use that ability to show and work us through the document. And so Nathan, if we turn it over to you?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you, Jim, for that introduction, Mr. Mayor, Board. Good to be with you guys this evening. My business partner, Rob Wilson, is on the call as well, but I will be running point for the presentation. So as Jim alluded to, we've concluded the audit for the fiscal year 2020, which ended March 31st, 2020. We've already had the opportunity to have a call with the mayor, city administrator, and various department heads last week. And we went over the audit report you have in front of you in detail. So what we're hoping to accomplish today is go through it at a high level, seeking the Board's approval to issue the final signed audit report for fiscal year 2020, and then some relevant deadlines that we have here on the horizon. The primary one, from an accounting standpoint, would be with State Auditor's Office, six-month requirement, which was September 30th. So we've got plenty of lead time there. And then I know Jim has spoken with Gilmore and Bell. They're always interested in getting a final issued audit report. And they've been made aware of our presentation this evening and issued copy to follow. So if you'll turn with me to page four, please, the audit report you have in front of you. And I am going to share my screen at this moment and kind of drive along as we go. Try to make it ease of use for everyone on the call. Jim, can you quickly confirm that you've got my screen?
I do. And if you want to maximize that, to make it as big as possible, we'll welcome that.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. All right. So page four of the audit report, the opinion paragraph, not going to read it in total, but it states that the financial statements referred to in this report are presented fairly in all material respects and the financial position of the governmental activities, business-type activities, and each major fund for the City of Kearney as of March 31st, 20 is accurate. This is a clean or an unmodified audit opinion, which is what you were looking for when you engage an independent third-party audit firm such as ours. So the City of Kearney has a good, clean set of books, keeps great financial records, and has accomplished that clean, unmodified opinion. Turn with me to page seven. Page seven, and I'm referencing the page numbers on the bottoms of your printouts for those of you that have it in front of you. Page seven, Statement of Net Position. So this is, shows two columns, right? We've got a governmental column. We've got a business-type activities column, which of course is water and sewer. And then we've got a total. I'm really going to hit on this in terms of the financial position of the City of Kearney in total with kind of just a few talking points about some of the movements year-over-year. So if we start in the asset section, at the end of the year, we've got 46.6 million in assets. And that's up $1.1 million year-over-year. And cash, it consists of cash of 10.5. That is down 4.5 million, but the reason cash is down is because substantial investments were made in the capital asset categories. Assets not being appreciated or land, 1.3 million. Assets being appreciated, that's your infrastructure improvements, machinery and equipment, 32.5 million. So I can tell you that capital assets increased year-over-year 4.7 million. The big driver there was the sewer plant, headworks, building and equipment invested in that line item within the fiscal year to the tune of about 3.9 million. Moving on to liabilities, we've got 24.6 million in liabilities. That is down 1.7 million year-over-year, which is the direct result of obviously having debt service on the different debt instruments, the GO bonds, leases payable and the like. So total long-term obligations are shown in two categories. Amounts due in less than one year, we call that current. That's a combination of sick leave payable as well as one-year debt service, the next 12 months, your debt service on the debt obligations of 2.3 million. And then we've got long-term, so due over those 12 months, or past those 12 months of 21.1 million. And like I said, those were down 1.6 million year-over-year, as you'd expect. You continue to make the payments and there were no new issues in that, in those categories. Probably most importantly, net position at the end of the year, total net position for the City of Kearney, 22 million. That is up 2.8 million year-over-year. We've got a couple of different categories. If you're going down the governmental column here, you've got 3.4 million invested in capital assets. You've got various restrictions, the two biggest being for debt service of 2.26 million, followed by 760,000 and change for public works, and then unrestricted, as the name implies. Those are kind of free and clear to use for any future purposes, 4.3 million. The middle column, business-type activities of the same, in the net position section at the very bottom, 7.6 million in capital assets, 3.4 million unrestricted, for a total of 11 million. So like I kind of said, it was a, I'm going to press pause from the actual face of the financial statements real quick and just kind of high-level, strong year. Cash was managed very well. I mean, anytime you can continue to invest at a very high clip in capital assets as well as pay down your debt service and continue to grow net assets or net position for the city of 2.8 million, that's a win across the boards. That was a very good financial result, high level when we look at it that way. Page eight, the next page. I'm going to go to the bottom right corner of it. And again, for those of you on my screen, I'm going to try to highlight it for you a little bit as I go through here. Change in net position, bottom right, that's that 2.8 million I hit on, on the face of a statement of net position. 958,000 of that was for water and sewer, leaving 1.88 million for general government. If we just kind of hit on water and sewer, because it's probably the most user-friendly in this view. If I go from the middle of the page, kind of working left, right, on the business-type activities, water and sewer, I've got 3 million in expenses for the year for water and sewer, 3.9 million in revenues for charges for services. That nets to about 900,000. And then the only other line item, if you follow that column down to the total of 11 million, was 45,000 in interest income to arrive at that $958,000 increase in net position for water and sewer. As we move to general government, staying in that bottom right quadrant, you've got general revenue in the form of taxes, your three-bank line items, as we all know. Sales tax, 5.5 million, property taxes, 1.6, and franchise taxes just north of 800,000. Then moving to the upper-left of this presentation, I'm going to be in the expenses column, staying all in primary government. So in the expense, we had 8 million, just north of 8 million in expenses for the year, 973,000 in charges for services. I think it is of note that interest on long-term debt was 333,000 within the year. So that flows down to the very bottom in the governmental activities column on the right side of the page. When added to all your revenue line items, including those tax totals I gave you, that's that 1.88 million increase for a balance of 11 million of net position at year-end. Page nine. Page nine, this is a balance sheet for governmental funds. This is basically the feeder document. We start at the highest summary level, then we go in down through various detail levels as we work our way through the report. This is the governmental balance sheet. I can tell you, these are the same numbers you've got on page seven, Statement of Net Position, with the exception of this view doesn't have capital assets represented in the asset section. It doesn't have long-term debt obligations and liabilities. And it doesn't have any of your net pension assets or long-term loggers pension-related items on this view, just from a different accounting presentation, but everything else is the same. Page 10 is the reconciliation of those two views, the reconciliation of page seven to page nine as we look at the two different views of governmental funds. And as I stated, everything is related to capital assets, long-term obligations, or pension-related items. Page 11. Page 11 is a statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for governmental. You can kind of see where I'm headed there. Again, capital assets aren't here. They're shown as expensed and actually flow through the various lines by department in the expense section. There's no depreciation because in this view, capital assets haven't been capitalized and depreciated. And then lastly, principal payments on debt service are shown as expenditures for those disbursements rather than paying down the liability on page 11. Page 12 is the reconciliation of page eight to 11, which again, statement activities, really just everything, capital assets, depreciation and the like. And then page 13 is Statement of Net Position for Water and Sewer Fund. This is identical dollar-for-dollar to the view you saw on page seven. Business-type activities, water and sewer being one, are always shown on full GAAP or accrual basis. So these are dollar-for-dollar the same as what we went through. Page 14, same thing, just the activities for water and sewer, again, ties to the water and sewer columns back on page eight. And then page 16, for the last kind of high-level view, this is a statement of assets and liabilities of agency funds. Definition of agency funds is money's held by the city for other entities. It's not actually the city's money. So at any point in time, this point in time, of course, being fiscal year-end, you can kind of see munich court, 2,400 there, CID's 847. So at year-end, 914,000 were held, and none of the activities for these different funds run through the city's books. But this is just a snapshot view of at that point in time, what's there. At this point, I'll move forward to the notes to the audit report, but did want to pause real quick. Does anyone on the board have any questions for the financials as you've seen them to this point?
Any questions from the Board? No?
Wonderful. Moving forward, page 25, if you turn with me to 25, please. All right. Page 25, I am under the compensated absences header. I made reference to it in the long-term obligations on Statement of Net Position, but just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on what's kind of in that number. We've got two different categories, of course, government and proprietary. And the government at year-end, this last line here, at year-end, cumulative liability balance for sick leave payable was 533,000 for government funds. And then for the water and sewer, the proprietaries, the same, sick leave payable was 111,000 at year-end. Page 28. Page 28, and the very top of page 28, note one, I think it is meaningful just to kind of see, what was the breakdown of cash and cash equivalents, deposits, as you think of them of, you know, standard checking accounts and money market accounts, 8.4 million at year-end, CDs just shy of 750,000, and then bond reserves of just shy of 1.4 million, to a total of 10.562 million in cash and cash equivalents at year-end. Page 29. Page 29, the very top of page 29, note three, long-term debt bonds. I'm going to work through the total column there. Beginning of the year, 11.585 million, 860,000 in principal payments on those debt obligations to arrive at a balance of 10.725 million at year-end. And then very closely related to those on page 30, very, excuse me, I'm skipping over, I am page 30. But page 30, I don't want to hit on these in detail, but I can just tell you that for every debt obligation there is out there, we've got an amortization schedule, which is presented. I'll use this 2015 GO bonds as an example. Per year debt service, principal and interest breakdown for the next five years, and then five-year groupings after that to arrive to the balance on each one of those obligations. So that's what page 30 is, those three. And then as we go to page 31, the very top of page 31, note four. So for capital lease obligations payable, reconciling to the beginning of the year, governmental 1.6 million, principal payments on those of about 240,000 to arrive at year-end of 1.378 million. Business-type, start the year at 11.236, 490,000 in principal on it, no new issues, and then 10.745 million. And again, those all tie back kind of to the face of the financials. Page 33 is the only individual one of those I really wanted to hit on, the very top of 33, Amphitheater. This was actually paid off during fiscal year 2020. We've got the note there just to state that, to be honest with you. And that'll roll off next year, but everything else kind of has the amortization schedules as I had told you in five-year groupings. Page 40, if you'll turn with me to page 40, please. Page 40, page 40, note five, pension plan. City of Kearney participates in two pension plans, both through loggers, one general and one police. This is a combined view of those two pension plans for the city. I will tell you that the actuary, excuse me, loggers hires an actuary to do an actuarial valuation annually. That always occurs as of June 30th. So here you're finding it reconciled from June 30th, 18, to June 30th, 19, because that was the most recent actuarial valuation within the fiscal year. Really just relevant to hit on this in total, entered the year, up here, upper-right column, 674,000. That's a net pension asset. Said another way, the net position of the pension plans for the City of Kearney with loggers had assets in that position in excess of the projected net pension liability to the tune of 674,000. So there was a surplus there. That surplus continued within the year, the very bottom two lines, net changes, grew that surplus by 123,000 to arrive at a surplus in the net pension assets of just shy of 800,000, 797,000. So we've said it in this forum in the past, continues to be a strong position, driven by really great market returns. You can see right here, 495,000 in investment return within the year. But again, as we kind of know, as it relates to pension and anything investment-heavy, it is really dependent on the market, the return on those investments continuing to contribute, you know, at a proper rate. So probably the biggest impact year-to-year for the City of Kearney is that because you have continued to be in such a strong surplus situation, your pension contribution rate has continued to decrease every single year. We've kind of been playing that game for a while, which is great, and it should continue, it will continue to do that, you know, until anything changes in that regard, or if that surplus were to change. But for right now, everything looks fantastic in that regard. Page 45 of the report. Page 45, note 11, the very top of page 45, a couple of things here. This, what this is doing is comparing the value of your cash deposits on hand in banking institutions versus the pledged securities, which are required, as well as FDIC insurance on those bank accounts. So in summary, you've got just north of 9 million, 9.16 million in deposits covered by FDIC or the collateral held by the city. You've got FDIC of 250, pledged securities of 11.4 million, for a total of 11.67. So you have insurance and pledged securities in excess of deposits of 2.5 million, again, as of March 31st, 20. But incredibly strong position there, no concerns, nothing to report to the Board. Definitely protected in that regard. Page 47. Page 47, note 14, a lot of numbers on this page. I'm just going to hit it on total. This is a detailed kind of reconciliation. It's not detailed, right? It's not line item assets, but it is detailed in terms of the categories. You've got governmental up top, then you've got business type in the middle, and then you've got total depreciation on the bottom. It shows your categories, infrastructure, buildings, improvements, where you can see beginning of the year with the additions, reconciled to the end of the year, all to tie back kind of to the face of the financials. But at the very bottom, the two relevant numbers, I believe, are depreciation expense for governmental activities on the year of 625,000. So as we know, depreciation's a non-cash item. But it is nice that you can run through 625,000 in depreciation expense and still have such a positive year from a results standpoint. And then business-type activities, water and sewer, 468,000 in depreciation for the year. I can tell the Board that kind of the back end of the report are really supplemental schedules. Like I said, we start at the highest summary view, and then it gets more detailed as we go through. I don't believe you need to turn there, but I can tell you that pages 55 through 58 are supplemental schedules by fund for general government, so the different funds that roll up to general government, as well as non-major funds. Then you've got pages 59 through 64 are supplemental schedules by fund, which are budget-to-actual comparisons. And then the last two pages of the report, pages 65 and 66 are supplemental schedules for the loggers pension plans, which is kind of are building out a 10-year history, and it's got five years of detail there. So as I kind of said in the open, you know, we've completed the process, obviously. We've got a report in front of you. We are seeking the Board's approval on that. The way that typically works, obviously, is motion and approval. You guys know how that works. But then there are two other letters that would close out the process is where I'm headed, that once we get approval from the Board, I call them management letters. I've actually got them right here. One is from the Board or the city to us, just basically stating that they believe, you guys believe we've completed the audit as engaged, and it will close out the audit process. And then the one that you may be more interested in, the letter from us, the firm, to you, the City of Kearney. I can tell you that the two things that are identified, the two points that are identified, I'll just read through them with you here. It's that we end up preparing the financial statements, the related notes to the audit report and packaging it all up for you. And then the second one being that, obviously, there's a limited number. Sorry, I see a couple of you guys squinting. I'll make this a little bit bigger for you. We, given the size of the staff, accounting and finance, right, everybody does a great job. You've got more than qualified people, but it is difficult, you know, with the number of headcount you've got, doing accounting, finance functions, obviously with Jim's oversight, to kind of have that separation duties or segregation of duties, to use kind of that buzz term of how you would differentiate. One person opens a mail, one person makes a deposit, one person enters it in the software, one person takes it to the bank, and then different levels of approval on up that chain. These are, I'll be honest with you, these are the exact same two points that we've put in this document in the past. In a government environment, which we are in, it asks for a response, which we've prepared. And basically, it states that no change is expected. One, we in good conscience definitely would not advise you to invest in an additional human resource with the cost that would be associated with that, just for the sake of preparing the audit report. Because quite frankly, the expectation is really that, you know, the entire 66 pages are done by you or somebody internal, that we just basically come over the top, review it, make sure it's right. And we know that's not the situation we're in. We've been engaged to do the accrual conversion, record the debt service payments, you know, and take that down against the debt obligations, capitalize the capital asset additions and maintain depreciation, that type of stuff. So it's all perfectly normal in a governmental environment. It's all perfectly acceptable. Clearly, it didn't impact our opinion on the report. It is that clean, unmodified opinion. And last thing I would say on that note is that this is an internal document. Obviously, the city's got public records and such, but, you know, you externally really shouldn't have to provide this to anybody. Nobody should be requesting it, but it is something that we, by our professional standards, are required to prepare. So with that said, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you. And I'd be absolutely happy to answer any questions anybody on the Board has or have any dialogue necessary.
I don't have any questions. Board, any questions or discussion for the Board?
Nope.
If there are no questions from the Board, we entertain a motion to authorize the audit in its final form.
I make a motion to authorize the audit, like this final form. I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Just need the one motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, that motion does it. And Nathan, very, thank you very much for joining us. And can you unshare your screen back to us now?
Yes, sir. I believe I've accomplished that.
I sure thank you guys for sharing on that. And we will get the management, let's see, the management letter signed and turned around to you. Is that where it is?
Yep, you're right, Jim. And then just for your peace of mind, we will, now that we've got that approval, we will issue. And by first thing tomorrow, if not later tonight, you'll have the signed report, okay?
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all. Bye.
Mr. Mayor, we have with us Megan Miller of Gilmore and Bell, who is attending by Zoom to answer the Board's questions concerning the authorization to issue the balance of the city's bond authorization for the purpose of constructing the I-35 interchange. the city's bond authorization for the purpose of constructing the I-35 interchange. Enclosed in four C is that proposed ordinance. It is a planned bond sale of date of September the fifteenth, and we are marching on straight, trusting that everything is going to fall in place, and we're going to be bidding in November for the project. And I don't know any other way to look at that. Do you, Megan?
No, I mean, that's exactly right. This is the final installment of general obligation bonds that you, the city, had authorized back in 2018. I believe, Jim, correct if I'm wrong, that was a four-point-three-million-dollar bond issuance in 2018. This is the remaining twenty, that's right. And this is the remaining twenty million. And so in front of you is the ordinance that approves the official statement, approves the sale. This is a parameters sale. So within the ordinance is a set of parameters like we've done before that have to be met before a sale can be completed. There is premium that's going to be generated on these bonds, which just, it increases your principal amount, but I mean, it does, will translate into higher principal payments in the end, but I mean, that's to be expected. So does anybody have any questions?
I think we're all trusting our bond counsel and financial advisor to take us through this project, and we're trusting that MoDOT will get some good bids for this project. So, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like me to read by title only, it's enclosed in four C.
You have to turn a few pages.
About the middle, past the table of contents.
You're not tabbed. There's a...
Page right at, there it is, the next page.
Yes, if we could, any questions for Mrs. Miller, our counsel? If no questions, if you could read by title only?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of not to exceed twenty-point-eight-million-dollar principal amount of general obligation bond series twenty-twenty of the City of Kearney, Missouri, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Or can we entertain a motion to pass ordinance?
I make a motion to pass this ordinance?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of not to exceed twenty-point-eight million dollars principal amount of general obligation bond series twenty-twenty of the City of Kearney, Missouri, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Make a motion to approve my second reading?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Please poll the board.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
And Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much. Next item of business is I want to report to you that we have met with Assured Partners Incorporated and propose and want to designate them as agent of record for the city's property and casualty liability and workman's compensation. Just as we changed brokers for the city's health insurance to the Bucati Agency, we'd like to give Assured Partners the opportunity to assist the city in handling insurance risk matters for the city. We will be going to market this year, and we will also be inviting a proposal from the Myrma Insurance Risk Pool, which they gave us a proposal back in 2013. Dan was on the board probably, and Jerry may have been there as well. And although we chose one beacon that year, we did, you guys sent me down to one of their seminars, and I've learned more about them. And Platt City has found them to have good experience with them for the last several years. And so I'm telling you that because we'll have a broker that brings several private sector bids, and then we'll have Myrma, who doesn't work through any broker, come to us with some bids. And so we'll be working with those, and probably it'll be December before we get all that. But I have enclosed information concerning Assured Partners. We're breaking our relationship with Hub, which used to be Heartland, which used to be Creacher Lynch. And so these folks have a strong network across the country, and they are experiencing municipal services as well. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. There's no necessary action, just inform you that that's what we are proposing to do. And now, under four E, Mr. Mayor, on further checking, the Southview siren was found to be a three-phase motor. Well, this is an ancient siren anyway, and to do it, to move it to another location where three-phase service isn't available, it costs a lot of money to run that. So it's just not worth doing. And so we are coming back to you and saying, hey, can we go ahead and increase the budget up to twelve thousand four, forty-five dollars to go ahead and purchase another one of those used federal sirens? And I, these are the same kind of sirens we have in our town, and they're rotating, and they have, they've been relieved from other communities because some communities have appropriated more money to go to voice, where they can actually talk to people, which I think is kind of crazy, but that's just me. And as far as I'm concerned, it frees up a siren that would cost well over twenty thousand dollars. We can buy them much cheaper and will give us a good, long life.
Has this been refurbished, or is it just used?
It's used, and it also comes with a metal pole. So that's what, you know, that's what makes it also valuable. It comes with a galvanized pole. And so it's, we think it's a good value. Blue Valley is the federal signal contractor in our area. They have cooperative purchasing contracts with the Mid-America Regional Council's cooperative purchasing group. And so we have a high degree of confidence that their pricing is good, although the mayor pointed out, he says, boy, we ought to be in the siren business, because it seems like a lot of money. However, you all, gave me the feeling that you would support such a move to go ahead and strengthen our siren system throughout our community, and this will help greatly. We would put a place this one at the, probably at the senior citizen complex, where it'll even have some overreach to the Church of Enunciation and the Fun Farm, and just give that, give James Point a solid coverage, which we've, we understand that interstate noise creates an ambient constant noise of about seventy or eighty decibels, just living next to the interstate. So they need, they need an extra boost, I think. And I think this will give it.
What's the closest one to them right now, Enunciation?
Well, we have one on the top of the hill at Jesse James Park, and, you know, we're that at the pavilion, and then the one downtown behind the fire station. So we do have a tiny siren right here at the firehouse, but it, if you look at the coverage map, it's not intended to get very far with its volume. And so really, the firehouse is the closest siren, I think.
And this is the area that's been identified by our emergency management director that needs some attention as well, so.
So I'm asking for a board motion to authorize an amendment to the budget and to authorize the purchase of this siren from Blue Valley.
Any other questions or discussion from the board?
I think safety of our citizens is always a top priority, so this is good.
Can we entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve this.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you, board. Appreciate that. Also want to report to you all that we have a bid date for Lyons Park of September the twenty-fifth. Here in a couple of days, we'll be having a bid meeting. Larry Reynolds with Vireo reports that they have fifteen contractors that have made inquiry, eight are plan holders. So that's pretty strong interest.
Hopefully, that results in favorable...
Yes. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report to you.
Thank you. We'll move on to public requests and petitions, item five A.
Mr. Mayor, I've contacted you all over the weekend. Cheryl G. Balvo reached out to us through Tim Harris, I think, and said, hey, we want to open up on today. And so we asked the board and shared that with our newspaper, that we were asking for that. You all came back independently and said, I'm going to support that. And so for the record, I will acknowledge that you guys gave us unanimous consent to proceed, and we have processed that liquor license application based on the board's authority. So we do have, under five B, Jerry Roberson with us, and maybe Pete Emerson. They are in the process of negotiating an acquisition of Gino's Italian Cuisine. We understand that Gino intends to remain an employee and sort of the face of the business, hopefully the voice of the, the vocal of the business, maybe. Maybe you can fill us in on that, Pete.
Can Jerry or Pete sing? Do we make that a requirement of their application approval?
Unmute there. Unmute, Pete. Can we, can you guys unmute? There they go.
All right. Are you able to hear me there?
Yes, sir.
All right. Sorry about that. I'm learning Zoom today. So, Mr. Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name's Peter Emerson, and Jerry is on here as well. Jerry and I have been working hand-in-hand with George and Julie regarding the Gino's Restaurant. And after talking, George does want to stay on. Julie's been wanting to retire and kind of go and help her son with his security company. So we were working out a way for Jerry and I to purchase the restaurant. We don't want to change anything with it, because the restaurant's fantastic and it's not broken. It's actually, it's very good. George never wanted to stop. He just, Julie kind of does all the books and the paperwork and everything, and I'm a banker by trade, and Jerry is a, Jerry's been in the restaurant business for well over thirty years. And so the two of us wanted to step in and purchase the restaurant and then work with George to grow it and take it to its next level. But that's pretty much the goals we have. We have a lot of things we want to do as far as bringing in coffee and some other, some other items to be able to enhance it. But we didn't really have any intent to change things as far as George walking the floor and singing. I know that tends to be something people look forward to. And as I was reading in the reviews, it seems like the menu items were very much in demand. So our goal was not really to modify it much at all.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I did mention to Pete that, because it's kind of a special business to us being downtown, and that I wanted them to see, you all to see his face. We don't generally ask too many questions of the applicant. They have a clean record. The only thing that's slightly unusual is we don't have a Clay County residence until Jerry gets moved here, but he is asserting that he's going to be a Clay County resident, which is in compliance, and their records are impeccable. And we recommend approval.
Any questions, comments from the board? If not, board, can we entertain a motion to approve the Gino's liquor license request?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you, Pete and Jerry, for attending, and we'll look forward to you, working with you in the future.
Yeah, welcome to Kearney.
Thank you, absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Right, at this point, we'll move to public hearings. Will you have a public hearing scheduled this evening?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, as was authorized with the adoption of the fiscal twenty-one budget, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider a five percent rate increase on both water and sewer rates. In 2017, Larkin Lampry Nielsen conducted a water and sewer rate study to evaluate revenues and operational expenses with a focus on future capital improvements for the water and sewer systems. Essentially, the recommendation was five percent annual increases in the water rates and twenty percent annual increases in the sewer rate to be implemented over a five-year period. The combined total, the rate would perhaps maybe ten percent per year. While the board implemented the first increase in 2018, they did not fully implement the 2019 increase, noting that the full sewer increase is intended for future sewer plant capacity expansion, and didn't actually have to be done immediately. Nor is the full recommended increase being set for 2020 either. We are recommending that, we call it a five percent increase. It's really, it's technically a net four percent increase, because we're not increasing the monthly service charge of five dollars. It would stay flat at five dollars per month. And we recognize, because that is the first step in anyone's rate, that for the small user and for the senior, we still are trying to keep our costs lower. So, you know, that's kind of how we're doing the rate structure. We've included with the PAC at a copy of the water and sewer rate study. We are submitted into evidence for this public hearing. We also submit our 2021 budget into the record for, to substantiate the need and identify why we would be asking for those rate increases. And I think that pretty much covers it. If you'd like to open the floor to public comment.
Yeah, at this time, we will open the floor for public comment. If you would like to speak for or against the proposed five percent water sewer rate increase now is the time, please come forward or raise your hand on Zoom, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one move, I will close the floor. Any questions or discussions from the board on the proposed increase?
Jim, one thing that, since I'm due to the board, do we have any idea when the next major improvement to the sewer plant would be?
I wished I could tell you that. We want to force stall out as long as possible. That would be the treatment basins, and we've been looking and talking to the engineer about adding a single giant treatment basin that would be, rather than two of them, our initial plan shows two of them, but we were thinking we might be able to make an argument. And the reason you needed to have two is you always have to have redundancy. So you have one down, you have one, you still have a working plant. And so that's why we have two clarifiers and multiple basins and two this, two that, simply for redundancy, so you don't have lossage going down the stream. You've always got some level of treatment capacity. And so we have been seeing with our clarifiers remarkable improved capacities. And that, what may trigger it is when DNR says, you're over your permit level, you've got to apply for a new permit. And when they do that, and tell us that we've got, you know, to add capacity, you know, even if our numbers are good, and our numbers have been really good. So it may be politics that, you know, and we do this, what is it, Donnie? Every three years now, or that we have to renew our permit every three, or is it five years? I can't remember now.
I think it's three.
That's what I'm thinking, too. So every three years, we have to apply for a new permit. And so they watch it, they watch it closely. And 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 it'll be maybe not so much as a number thing, or, you know, it's, it's, we're not, we're not in trouble with our affluent limits. They're in really good shape. And and so, but we've got to stay there, comfortably so. And so I wished I could tell you, but things look good right now. Not going to, not going to need it next year. I'm sorry for dragging that out.
No, it's, I mean, the only, my only concern is, you know, if if in the near future, we were faced with a major upgrade in the sewer plant, and all of a sudden, we don't have.
The rates aren't there.
Right. So that would be my only concern.
I think it's important to remember that water and sewer funds can only be spent on water and sewer needs. So, you know, in my, what I'm, in my, I don't want to speak for you, but what I'm hearing is, are you, do you think we should consider during the full increase for this, the recommendation of Larkin Lamp, or?
I'm just concerned that, you know, how many years are we into the new permit?
The new permit?
I'd have, I don't know that. I don't open my head.
I don't either.
I'd have to check. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. I would just hate to see us all of a sudden.
Gradual increases instead of a massive.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, even when they do get, go through the new new permit, and they tell us, they give us the directive, they will give us adequate time. They will, you know, it'll, it'll be, it'll be more than one year that they give us to be able to meet things because they understand the situation. I think we've shown good investment in our sewer plant in the past several years.
Absolutely.
That that they will respect and understand. And and I, and the numbers, the numbers matter. And so, like I say, our affluent standards are are being comfortably met at this time. So I I'm comfortable in recommending the increase that we we have. I was more worried that you guys weren't going to approve this one. And and I was worried when I, when I heard those guys say, we added $1 million to the bottom line last year. I'm saying, well, that isn't what I see, you know? Of course, you've got to understand, those statements aren't, weren't all, you know, what my numbers are, we had a good year last year, but we're not, we didn't, we didn't add $900,000 to the cash balance. We did, we did, we did, I mean, we did add $150,000 in cash, back to the cash balance of the operating fund. When we see, and then they add all these other funds together, and I guess I should have brought that up to this passion.
It's not all unrestricted.
And, yes, it's not all unrestricted.
Unfortunately.
Yes. So I want to, I want to make that point, is that, man, if I had $900,000, I know what I'd go be fixing right now, in the water and sewer.
Well, I kind of like where we're at because I don't know exactly how many people in town have been off work this year because of COVID or whatever. Just because I was an essential employee and it didn't affect me doesn't mean that there's many people that it did. And raising their water and sewer, which is something they have to have, is kind of beyond their control. They're going to have to pay that. So I kind of like staying where we're at here and not raise the sewer, if we can get by this year.
And I think that's why it's, and I appreciate Jim pointing that out. It's key to point out that the fee portion stays the same, with five use that would increase, granted, still increase. I understand.
It's just water, not water and sewer, so.
So we are raising the sewer 5%, but it's not the full 20%.
Right.
Right.
Completely. Well, and I'm, I'm fine with this, this year. I just wanted to, you know, just make sure that we're not caught in future years with a massive.
A huge increase.
Yeah.
Right.
With a huge increase of 20 or 30%. And and then the seniors are really screaming because they can't afford that. And I agree with Dan that this year is is not the year to to go raising rates because of COVID and and people out of work. I just wanted to get that out there, that if this happens, that's a major, major hit. So.
Any other questions or discussion from the board? If not, Jim, if you could read the proposed ordinance by title only, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, enclosed in 6A. An ordinance amending ordinance number 1395-2019 and the city code section 700 and section 720 of the City of Kearney prescribing the amount to be charged customers for water and sewer services.
Would you entertain a motion for the ordinance?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 1395-2019 and the city code section 700 and section 720 of the City of Kearney prescribing the amount to be charged customers for water and sewer services.
Make a move. Make a motion to approve on second reading.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Poll the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have no old business scheduled for this evening, no new business scheduled for this meeting. So we'll move to Alderman discussion. Alderman Spencer?
I think it was a wonderful holiday. The weather was fabulous. It was a great weekend in Kearney.
Alderman Holt?
I don't have anything at this time. Thank you.
Alderman Lehman?
I would just echo that this weekend was was great to be in Kearney. I noticed a lot of people out walking around and enjoying our trails. And and I was one of those. And and so we were very blessed to have several miles of trails to be able to enjoy on weekends like this.
Alderman Barker?
I have nothing. Thank you.
I'll just add a few comments. I think there's pictures included of our West Booster Pump Station. So I'd like to congratulate Donnie on his first major project that he's handled as our superintendent. So job well done. Well done there, Donnie, to you and your staff. And
Those came out in color.
Hopefully, all the kiddos in town had a good first day of school. If there is no other Alderman discussion, can we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion. I'll click it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned. Have a good evening, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And David Pavlich, she did.